All right, thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. If you have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Whitren?
Present.
Commissioner Wooddella?
Here.
Commissioner Ramone?
Present.
Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Allen? Commissioner Allen, are you there?
Here.
Oh, there you go. Just quiet volume, but I gotcha. And Chair Stephenson?
Here. With that, we will do Pledge of Allegiance, and I will be leading this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where rich and stands, and to the right of doing justice for all.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak on a non-agenda item this evening and not seeing a full house here at the Kellogg Room, anyone call in or on the Zoom call that wishes to know of Amber? Any public who seems to be testimony?
I didn't receive any.
Okay.
We may receive some public interest in the second item on the agenda. But we were told, we told folks who are potentially interested in that, that probably eight o'clock would be the earliest we would get to it, given our heavy topics tonight, so they may arrive later, but probably for that topic.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, move along. In two minutes, did everyone receive a copy of the minutes from May 12th, 2021 meeting? And we will start with Commissioner Wilcox.
Hey, thank you, Chair Stephenson. I'd really work at this when they were generally very excellent. I found very few errors. I didn't bother to print them out because there were so few, so I hope you can track along with me. Page three, first paragraph, the very last sentence reads, "Also, the approval will create a precedent for approval of electric, electrical fences within the city." We found out later in the meeting that there had been a precedent set already by, I think it was an auto recycling business or somebody or other, 12 years prior or something like that. But anyway, I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if that needs to be changed, if that quote was correct or transcribed correctly. On the same page, under Mr. Damgan, paragraph A, the very last line reads, "Applicable standards, comma, or a variance or adjustment is granted." I'm wondering if the word "or" should maybe be before, otherwise I'm not sure what's trying to be stated there. Do you have any idea, Chris?
I would have to double check the language that's in the code, Mr. Wilcox. I can try to find that up for you.
So would it be something like applicable standard, comma, a variance or adjustment?
Probably. I think that first would be.
Okay, moving along.
All right.
Mr. Wilcox, just for clarification on your previous edit, that last sentence at the top there, also the approval, are you suggesting a strike through? That's, that's not actually correct?
Right, yeah.
There's no objection from Steph, because that was a staff comment and probably me.
If you're okay with it.
Yep. Okay, page eight, the third paragraph that starts, Mr. Allen, second line and third line, the word "amperage" is misspelled, should be A-M-P-E-R-A-G-E. You got that?
Yeah.
Let's see. Let's make one before I close out here. This one toward the back here, so I'll have to remember to keep going after this one. These were, these were a little more serious errors. On page 12, the third paragraph down starts with Mr. Whitren. It says, second line says, "Ms. Glance, Ms. Glance seconded the motion."
No.
That should be Ms. Prickett. And let's see, a couple paragraphs below that, the one that reads, "Ms. Prickett made a motion to accept the findings of fact, special variance." That was the vote on the electric fence portion of the application. The tally of the votes is actually incorrect. It should be Ramone, no, Prickett, no, Wilcox, yes, Whitren, no, Allen, no, and Stephenson, yes. I confirmed that by listening to the recording. I confirmed the Glance versus Prickett also on the audio. So one more way back toward the end. Actually, a couple on this page, 16, page 16. Top line reads, Chair Stephenson said that bottom line, they already have 720 new units, and many of those have already been permitted. But I think the 720 units is what the state or county, whichever, was calling for. The way that reads, it makes it sound like the 720 are, are actually in the pipeline.
Right. And the 720 is the projection?
It's the requirement for us to accommodate the next 20 years.
Okay, then.
720 is the projection.
Well, I think the spirit of what you were trying to say here is that already, as of this point, we're almost halfway there as far as delivery on that 720 number.
Correct.
So how you want to phrase it, it's up to, you're the one who made the comment, but I recall that was what you were intending.
Already have half of the 720 new units, or 340 to be exact. Yeah, okay, so how about we say half of the new units of the 720? That work?
Further edits, Mr. Wilcox?
Well, I'm still reading it as 720, essentially in the pipeline, rather than, you know, an expectation from the higher authorities.
Already have 340 of the 720 projected.
Okay, yeah, that done work. Okay, then, second paragraph from the bottom, it starts, Mr. Damgan. Looks like the third sentence states they will send out the correspondence they've received from the Fair Housing Office of Oregon. I never saw that letter. I saw it, it was posted online briefly during the meeting, but I never saw an actual printed version of it. And that's all I have toward the end, to the end. Thank you.
Any other corrections to the minutes of May 12th, 2021? Okay, Commissioner Ramone?
Yeah, just one, Mr. Chair. Chris, if you could, please go back to page 12, where Commissioner Wilcox made a correction about the third motion. Mr. Prickett made a motion, and it's written, Whitren seconded the motion. So it seems strange that Commissioner Whitren might make the motion, and they voted against it. So the last four vote must be somebody else. Allen, instead of Wilcox, and the last one has to be somebody else, because it's hard to imagine that he makes the motion and voted against the motion, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay. Did you catch that on the tape, Paul?
Yeah, I'm glad Mr. Ramone raised that issue. I, I actually questioned that procedurally, that Ms. Prickett, Commissioner Prickett would make a motion to approve something that she intended to vote against.
Yeah.
I thought that was a little irregular.
It does happen.
I know, I know the, you know, the intent was to force the vote, but, but still, it seemed a little odd to me.
Well, it's strange, but it is technically allowed, just like you said, forcing the vote to end the discussion.
Okay, so the question is, we, I guess I asked Jordan what he.
I believe that was correct, because we were forcing the vote in order to get the rewrite done.
Okay. All right, any other corrections to May 12? All right, good job, guys. Motion to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I moved that we approved the minutes of May 12th, 2021 of the Troutdale Planning Commission, as amended.
I will second that one.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Prickett, seconded by Commissioner Whitren, approved the minutes of May 12th, as corrected. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. That one carries. And now, the big show. So for tonight's agenda items, which are case file 75-06, Urban Mixed Use Zoning District, a type four application, and case file 75-07, Senior Housing, a type four application. And before we get into these, I would like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedure will be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the City Council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as the Citizen Committee for the Review of Land Use Application and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the City Council, who renders the final decision. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. Hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, then followed by proponents, then followed by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may validate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open, for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision Both of the applications tonight are type four. Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the City Council, who will render the final decision. And in both of these, I believe the application, the applicant is the city.
Technically, for this one, the first one, it's going to be the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay.
But the city works on behalf of it, so.
We get to work over the city. We get to work over the city.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, and so Planning Commission will be making a formal recommendation to the City Council. And before we open the public hearing on case file 7506, does any members of the Commission have any ex parte contact or bias to declare conflict of interest? Okay. With that being said, we will now open the public hearing for case file 7506, Urban Mixed Use Zoning District. This is a type four application. All right, take it away. You doing the honors?
I guess I'll do the honors. I will be assisted by Amber, if need be. So thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. This is a big one tonight, one we've been talking about throughout the spring, and actually, winter into spring, and here we are. This is, and maybe for those of you who've been on Planning Commission, you may recall, this is our first new zoning district proposed in quite a while. We've had, of course, some map amendments here and there, but this is, we don't do this very often. We are proposing a new zoning district before you tonight. I'm going to do a very brief PowerPoint presentation, but I will intend to talk largely from the document, from the packet, and specifically from Attachment A, which has a lot of the text, the actual text amendment. So let me do a quick presentation here on that, and then we'll, we'll dive into the nitty gritty. Before we begin, can everyone see the cover slide of, great, thank you. All right, so tonight, we have a land use application. It is actually two applications or two amendments bundled into one land use application. First, and probably will spend the majority of our time discussing tonight, the actual text amendment. That means we are making an amendment to the Development Code, and we would be seeking to establish a new zoning district, and to also add and modify land use definitions to help us clarify the spirit and intent of development that we wish to have. The new zoning district is called the Urban Mixed Use Zoning District, or MU3 would be the abbreviation for it. The second part of the application is incumbent upon the first being approved, and that is a map amendment application. We are updating our zoning district map and adding a new color to it, and we will be effectively rezoning what we call the Confluence Site, which is a significant portion of the urban renewal area of the city of Troutdale, to this new zoning district. Again, it's, it's worth mentioning, although it is often seen as the city's property, it is actually technically under the ownership of the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Troutdale. And per agreements, city staff represents the agency in these matters, and the agency is technically the applicant. Should be made very clear tonight, that tonight, we are not thinking or looking at any particular development proposal. We are simply establishing the groundwork and the location for potential development. But this action that we're taking place right now is endorsed by the recently approved Town Center Plan. It calls for creating a new zoning district in this location, and being very deliberate about thinking about what could go there. Luckily for you, you folks have the joy of recommending, making a recommendation. You do not have to be the final deciding factor, however, the City Council, I'm sure, will appreciate your, your wisdom in this, in this decision. So talking about the text amendment first, again, we are establishing a new zoning district. It's going to be section 3.090. It's also in Attachment A of your staff report. And it follows a basic outline that you see in other zoning districts with a couple of interesting wrinkles here. First comes a purpose statement, that's 3.091. That's pretty typical. Why are, why does this district exist, and what is it hoping to accomplish by existing? You then have a section called permitted uses, and we're going to actually get into that one quite a bit tonight. We talked about it over the spring, when we discussed the use table, and the idea of what land uses, what type of development would you be comfortable with in the zoning district, knowing where it would be applied. So permitted uses are listed. Unlike other portions or other zoning districts that we have currently in the code, what we're proposing to do with this one, as an experiment, is to kick it out into a use table, which would be in an entirely different section. That's that second-to-last bullet there on your screen. So there's reference language to say, please look at the use table in section 3.002. And why do we put it there? Well, if we're able to, if, if this is a easy-to-use, easy-to-understand reference, we are able then to further populate that use table with other zoning districts with future, future text amendments. So we're just trying this out to see, does this make a difference as far as interpreting and understanding and clearly defining what development expectation we have there? The other use section is quickly just there, basically saying that the director has the authority to interpret other uses that don't neatly define into any particular use. That's pretty standard language. Specific use standards, and again, we'll, we'll cover this a little bit more specific, but certain land uses, you may want to set parameters on. You're like, okay, we're okay with this type of development if X, Y, Z. And that's what that section is. It looks at particular land uses and suggests there should be some unique standards applied to that particular district. It doesn't make it a conditional use, and it doesn't necessarily negate it, but certainly having parameters, whether it be size, height, or, or something of that nature, we're applying specific standards to that in that section. Then comes dimensional and density requirements. This is pretty straightforward, as it is in many other sections. This talks about height, and building setbacks, things of that nature. It's very hard to do this when you don't have an existing template or any development to speak of as of yet. So it's not as, perhaps, detailed as it perhaps could be, but it's at least a starting point, for, for Emily filling in the blank. And then there's a section for additional requirements, and we'll probably have a lot of discussion on that tonight as well. The other thing the text amendment does is it creates a use table, and it adds or amends several definitions, which you see here on this page. It was also within the staff report. So you can see a lot of definitions are being added or amended. And the big question is, why are we doing this? Why are we using this moment? Why are we creating all of these new definitions? I'm going to take my mask off, excuse me. Couple reasons. One is, we're establishing a use table. If you're going to create a use table, you should have those definitions, and you should have what you're trying to, to have neatly in the table. If you identified within a row, it should be able to track back to a definition for that particular land use. Secondly, there's a couple of antiquated terms that are in the definitions, or don't exist in the definitions, but are referenced elsewhere, and this provides us an opportunity to effectively get the code up to kind of current expectations. Third is, there's a compliance factor for both current terms. When it talks about certain uses, we look to the Oregon Revised Statutes or Administrative Rules to see what the current terminology is, and whether or not there's anything that needs updating. It also gives us an opportunity to get a little bit ahead of the game on future state requirements, as far as definitions that we know are going to be required of us. It gives us the chance to at least insert them in, doesn't necessarily change anything else, but at least the definition is in, and it leads to an easier, or at least shorter, future amendment down, down the road. It eliminates a lot of ambiguous interpretation that the director or other planning staff has to do. There are a few definitions in there where it gets a little squishy. We don't have often good written precedents as far as how previous staffs may have evaluated it. By creating a little bit more clear understanding and a little bit more objective defined words, or at least uses, that, that certainly helps us from an interpretation standpoint, and it also gives development a greater comfort level on what may or may not be allowed. And finally, you know, we are creating a new zoning district. We haven't done this in a long time, and we really want to make sure, in particular with this zoning district and the property that the zoning district would be applied on, that we ensure we get a desired outcome. So when we say, for instance, you know, eating and drinking establishment or restaurant, we may not exactly want a drive-through coffee kiosk, but that could be chalked up as that. So you have to sometimes get to that level of precision to, to make sure that you're properly conveying what the expectation of the community is. So that's why this zoning change, this zoning district establishment, really merited a good look through our definitions, and that's why we're making those suggestions for you tonight. The map amendment, again, this is just highlighting where this zoning district would be applied to. Right now, there would be three properties affected. One is the very large plus or minus 16-acre property, which is the property that would be slated for private development, probably in the next couple of years, as the city prepares for solicitation, as well as the two waterfront properties that, at least right now, are maintained and expected to continue to be maintained by public ownership. Almost certainly, the city of Troutdale would be having that. And those are the three properties that would be falling into that zoning district classification. The outlet mall ownership right now is not in a position to consider this new zoning district, but certainly, they could be potentially eligible. But right now, our focus would be just on the agency-owned three, three properties, the so-called Confluence Site. So we have a couple of suggestions for you tonight, because this is a big one, and this might help steer the conversation into making sure we're, we're staying on track and on time. Staff is requesting the, kind of suggesting the following order. Take a look at the general framework in, in Attachment A. Make sure you're comfortable with it for the first five sections, 3.091 through 3.095. You'll also want to make sure, when you're looking at 3092, you're actually looking at the use table. So please take, take a look at the use table. I know we did spend a lot of time in the spring going through that use table to make sure you had comfort with it. So please take another look at that and make sure that when you see the definition and you see the use listed, that it makes sense to you, or if it doesn't, then let's get a change tonight, or suggest a recommended change tonight. The tougher pill, and I suspect it probably was, went for some of you when you were reading the staff report, is that last section, 3099, where it talks about some additional requirements, in particular, off is that last section, 3.099, where it talks about some additional requirements, in particular off-street parking. That can be very tough, and it's very hard to do, particularly when we're talking about a zone change that is not tied with specific development. If we're having too much heartburn on that particular section, one of the things you could suggest tonight in a recommendation to city council is that you push the pause button on that section if you don't feel like it's ready for primetime. And you just advance those first five sections, as well as those definitions, to city council. And we can come back and do 3.099 at a later point. You can suggest that, hey, move forward with these sections, leave that one alone if you're not comfortable with that section. But if you are, that's fine, and you can move forward with what we've presented as written. So the last thing I want to point out too, before we take any questions and dive into maybe the content of those changes, is a small change to the draft findings. So if you look in your staff report on page... Page nine and 10. I'm seeing this right? Page nine and 10. Excuse me, page 10. The third paragraph down starts with, "Goal 10 speaks of the need for cities to maintain an adequate supply of sites." Staff is requesting, based on some late feedback from a couple of agencies, that we have to beef up this section. We've run by the text you see here on the screen in red to make sure that that passes the smell test for some of those agencies, and it does. But basically, we're demonstrating objectively how we are adhering to statewide planning goals by creating this zoning district. How would we be improving the housing opportunities in the city by passing this zoning district as written, basically? And what we're saying here is you are allowing additional density by the chance that you could go higher. Therefore, you're creating additional housing units. You could be effectively doubling the amount of housing units you could be putting on a property that you otherwise normally wouldn't. So it's just a, it seems strange to add it in there, but it is an example of how your action could have a desired or demonstrable result that the state needs in order to basically say, yes, you've adequately addressed the statewide land use goal, that you're presenting a clear evidentiary example of how this zoning district creates a situation that can benefit your housing situation. So a lot to unpack there. But it is a strongly suggested addition. Again, we only got it yesterday because it came after we got the report. But what we would suggest doing is still recommending approval to council. Consider that the finding of that text amendment criterion B, what I just showed you, should be amended. And then, again, following discussion tonight, presuming you are comfortable to move forward with a recommendation to council. Council hearings would be next Tuesday and the following Tuesday to move forward with this application. If you do decide to continue it, which is of course within your realm, just understand that it would affect the schedule, and that staff would be requesting a meeting sooner than later. Our goal is to have this amendment ideally be passed before council takes its summer recess in mid-July. Speaking of council, I believe Council Glance is entering the room, and I think Councilor Caswell is on the call too. So before we dive into the nitty-gritty of any of the text or in the attachments or the findings in the staff report, are there any questions about what we've prepared thus far in that presentation or any of the motives behind why we're doing this?
Okay, questions from the commission? Any? Okay, not seeing any hands. I had a couple. First one being, you said that if needed, we could pull out like section 3.099 and not address it. Can we do that too? Type four application?
You can't...
Can we pass it piecemeal?
You can't necessarily pass it piecemeal. What you can say to the council, because it would be forwarded to the council, is make a suggestion that you're okay with 80, 90% of this, but this last section withhold or strike through that section for the time being if you're not comfortable with it. So it's basically amending the ordinance. It's amending the written, a portion of what has been drafted.
But the applicant would have to agree to that.
And what I'm saying is, on behalf of the applicant, or as the applicant, I said, I would say, is that the applicant would be okay with, if you're not comfortable with it tonight, we could work on that at a future commission and have a future amendment to bring that back to you if you're not comfortable with that section.
Okay. And then another question that I had was regarding that new enhanced text.
Yes. I don't know if enhanced is the right word, but sure, the new text, yeah.
That property wasn't even zoned residential. And so not only are we increasing the housing capacity, now it just seems like maybe they're just a touch greedy. It might not be the best word, but it's the only one I can come up with, that we've gone from commercial property to residential property, which I think is a great step. And now it's like, well, that's not good enough for them.
I just took it off-screen real quick, because I had to look at something that was in a correspondence I received.
Anybody agree? No? Okay.
Basically, what we're talking about here is a legal term called factual basis. So when you're creating a finding, if you're making a statement by saying, okay, by doing this, we're increasing housing possibility and supply.
Correct.
Okay. Prove it. That's factual basis. And so basically, without the instance of an example of how, don't just say you're going to do it. Show us how you're intending to do this. And so what we basically put in that statement was, okay, here's an example. You're allowing higher increases in building height. If those buildings happen to be residential, you're going to have more residential density because you are creating therefore more or greater chance for more units to be produced at that location. That satisfies the factual basis smell test. So basically, what the state was saying is you have to better buttress your findings with an example that demonstrates factual basis. That's how you demonstrate compliance with the statewide land use goals.
So our fallback position would be we've moved it from commercial to residential.
That's another example too.
Okay. And so we've increased our inventory by making that move, I guess.
Substantially. And, you know, I think it further, beyond just this application, it gives us further evidence of this city's commitment to housing.
Right.
Which is often and frequently come into question, not necessarily from the state, but it's just further demonstration that we're not shirking or shying away from our housing responsibilities. In other words, it further underscores if we're ever questioned about it, that says, uh-uh, no, we actually are doing things here. We've provided that opportunity, and in particular for this property, where clearly the community desire is for higher-end housing, which was identified as a need in the Housing Needs Report.
Correct.
You're allowing that opportunity, that housing need, to be delivered on that property.
Right. And that property wasn't part of the inventory before.
Exactly.
It just kind of reminds me, the kid that gets a new bike and he's mad because it isn't blue.
Well, it's basically, it could be that, but it's also kind of like a professor-student relationship. The student can say you're going to do it, the professor wants proof that you're doing it. And so this is by adding that language, we're showing proof. And we know that that will satisfy the requirement. We've been made, we've been assured that that would be the case.
Well, I would think it like covers everything from a doghouse all the way up to executive house. Any other questions for staff? Okay. All right, with that, I guess we will move into testimony. Right? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent to this application? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to this application?
Hang on one sec, let me grab you a microphone.
Hang on, guys, we've got a live one here.
Thank you. Diane Castillo White, resident of Troutdale. And I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I have some questions that I'd like to answer, so for this portion, I can have some better understanding. On a page, we're talking about page 10, that the new language that's added that you just got yesterday. I'm wondering if I'm agreeing with the more livability there, because I think there's, that that's a good mix. And I was in the Town Center Committee, and we did talk about that. I am in the Town Center Committee. We talked a lot about having, fulfilling our lack of higher-end housing. And we had thought that that would be an appropriate place so we could support our downtown, our community services, entertainment, and so we could be financially sustainable and have quality places for the entire town to be able to go to kind of live, work, play, be close, shop close, and spend your money closely as well. And that would help create a robust place desirable for the community to go to. I'm not sure that I'm understanding it on saying why the statewide planning goal 10, if that's also requiring diversity, including low-income housing, where we are meeting those needs at other locations. So is there a mandate or it's, no, no mandate at this time for lower-end housing at this property?
No, not for the zoning district. They can't, they cannot specifically say that. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking, that's your testimony?
Oh, no, that's not, no, it's a question.
Sure.
So, okay. Also, if you're talking about the parking, and you're talking about two points, something reduced to one parking per unit, parking space per unit, is that correct? I'm recalling that on plans previously submitted, as in hotels, that the parking lots proposed were only going to include one parking space per door. And that's past things I read. And so if we do have those hotels, I'm just concerned that employees, yeah, workers and visitors and such, because in here, we're not talking about a parking structure at this time. Our hope at the beginning with the Town Center, we had a drawing that included a parking structure, which was kind of exciting because that would provide additional parking, possibly for a nice flow of Old Town to the waterfront, to the factory outlets. And I went to the first Friday, which was hugely successful. Staff did amazing job. There was a lot of entertaining things for children's and families. That was just wonderful. A couple complaints that was not solicited was parking. And my comment at the Town Center had always been, if we don't have parking, we don't get to have, it's harder for community to gather. So I'm just making a statement here that parking is a concern. I participated in the urban renewal, walking door-to-door years, maybe decades ago. I'm not sure how long ago that was. And the one thing that the citizenry robustly supported it was to visit the entertainment area of the waterfront, whatever we would put there. And with restricted parking, I'm also concerned that it would, it might lessen the ability for the townspeople to come visit the area, which we proposed to them, got them to be behind it and support it for all these years. So those are my only comments for now. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else wishing to speak as a opponent or neutral party? All right.
Can I answer Ms. White's question?
Yes, you may.
Okay. And again, I apologize for jumping in during your testimony. To Ms. White's question or concern about potentially, I think she referenced hotel parking. Hotel parking ratios are already set in code. They're not supposed to be changing for this particular standard. The standard is one space per hotel room, or that's the minimum standard. As far as where she's identified in that other section about potential reductions in parking, that is true, it's in there. But one of the desired outcomes for doing that, and this would have to be also done in parcel more on, not through code, but by through negotiations, since it's the city that owns this property in particular, that if there is a desired outcome, say for structured parking or shared parking, that that becomes an expectation of development interest. And if you're going to create a structure that can have 2, 3, 4, 500 cars that could be contained in a single location, and you're thus really efficiently using the space of the site, then maybe you shouldn't have the same types of parking standards that you would in a standard commercial or a standard residential area, because you could be consolidating some of those spaces in that area. That's what that last section, that 3.099 section is getting at, when it's suggesting potential proximate parking nearby. It's, if we're intending to create kind of a really high-end, high-desired, attractive, walkable community or neighborhood, for lack of a better word, one suggestion is you try to consolidate parking where you can. And sometimes those property lines may not pour at that. So that's why we're suggesting maybe you would want to seek flexibilities through code, but ultimately through negotiation, when the city intends to secure development for that. The Town Center Plan very clearly states a desire for structured parking. That doesn't change, but that can't really be codified necessarily. What can be codified is the flexibility to create properties where you don't have to account for every single required space on that property, and you can be flexible if that's your desired outcome to have parking located somewhere on that site.
Questions back for staff? All right. So with that, I think we're ready to close the public hearing. Okay. Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
My second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Cricket, close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we go. So you want us to go through this thing and not do it up and down, correct?
It's your call procedurally how you want to move forward, Mr. Chair. I mean, again, you're recommending, so that's your call. If there are particular pinch points or certain commissioners that they want to bring up, that's your call how you want to... that's your call how you want to proceed with this.
I guess I would start with this, any issues with the definitions?
That's a question on a few of them. Chair Stephenson.
Give me one moment to catch up. Pull it up on screen too.
Okay, first one I was looking at was, I actually had an email exchange with Chris regarding this one. The definition of duplex doesn't seem to be that you're allowing for a duplex wherein each side is on its own separate lot. That seems to fall under the definition of a two unit townhouse, as you say, in a row of two or more attached units, where each dwelling is located on its own individual lot. You know, when I think of a townhouse, I automatically think of a two or three story structure. I don't envision a duplex at all. So that's, I don't know, if you might call it duplex on separate lots, a townhouse, you can, I guess, but doesn't doesn't sound right to me. I'll just keep going, I've just got a couple others. Few spaces down from townhouse, got financial institution. And the last line says standalone automated tiller machine is considered a financial institution. There's a, what I'm thinking is there's a standalone ATM on Division Street by the golf course near Hogan, corner of Hogan and Division. I really don't think of, think of a standalone drive by ATM machine as a financial institution. And the last one I had was very last one under vehicular services. You include junkyard. It's kind of a archaic term, I think. I wouldn't consider a pick and pull, for example, a junkyard. Junkyard could be other than vehicles, it could be any kind of junk. So I kind of questioned using that term entirely. And that's all I have under definitions.
Okay, would, I guess I'd start with, I'll just start with the last one. What if we went auto salvage?
Sure.
And replace junk with the word auto salvage? That be okay?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Anybody have any objections to that?
Mr. Chair, it's not an objection, it's just a consideration as I've done in the past. Is that when we start to lock ourselves into details of a definition, semantics has a strong meaning. So my approach has always been, and I, if you remember from the past, let's give ourselves space to wiggle. If we start to define to define, then we're going to die also about those definitions that are too narrow. Junkyards, as the commissioner suggested, open itself to most interpretation, not just autos, to anything, which in clear statement means we don't want to junk. And to me, it's a better approach, we start to be defining too much, because somebody's going to walk around, circumnavigate that word, that semantic. And we're going to find ourselves in an undefensible situation. It's just, it's just a consideration.
Yeah, and okay, and I guess the only thing I was looking at was Commissioner Wilcox and was questioning the the word junk as it being probably a little antiquated. And so it would just be if we want to use a maybe a different terminology. I don't think we're we're changing what it is.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure, but auto has become too specific. But again, this is, this is a personal preference, of course. I mean, I don't know what the other commissioner thinks. But again, my warning to the to the rest of the commission was let's be cautious when we try to envision in 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 a vacuum, a specific view of this space. This is not the time to be that specific. Also, because this is, as we've said before, this is a ball view, but it's also still, still remains a recommendation to the council. And the council is going to interject with its own preference and changes. But again, the bottom line, and again, this is, this is not a criticism, it's just a consideration, is let's be cautious when we start to narrow too much definition. It's easy to circumnavigate the definition that is too narrow, instead of saying, no, no, we 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 cover under the umbrella of, and maybe junk, if you think, you know, it is a too archaic of a word, fair enough. But I think is 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 a jergo is, you know, that is a lexical that everybody understands. But but again, we are talking about details, because at this point, again, this is our recommendation to City Council. I'm sure the council are going to have plenty of opportunity to interject their preference with details where from individual biases like all we have.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's helpful, I think the reason staff use the word or the phrase junkyard is we actually have it defined in the code.
Okay, and we can stay with junkyard. I was just going back to one of the things for this application is trying to narrow down some of these definitions was the request of staff. And so I I see what you're saying, Commissioner Mamon, but it's kind of like this is what staff is presenting. So it's kind of like what you're saying is open it back up a little bit from what they're giving us, right?
No, no, Mr. Chair, exactly, exactly the opposite. I'm I'm completely in favor of what the staff has said. I'm just, I'm just counseling against changing that wide broad of definition and narrowing it down so it becomes indefensible for us. What the staff has presented right now is actually philosophical, follow the approach that I suggesting. That is, we are somewhat vague with our interpretation of the world, because we can cover it. If we are too specific, somebody's going to really go around it. And then we are not going to have a defense, because it's spelled out very clearly. And 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 I'm so much so in favor of what the the staff has presented. And because also it's an elaboration of our extensive work over the past months. And again, recognizing that while it is a bold document, it still remains a recommendation to council, so subject to amendment, to interjection of preferences, that I'm I'm ready to move for for a recommendation of the document as it is, I might jump in again, again, as always. But so, no, I I just want to do sure, I'm very fine with what the the staff has presented right now. I just counseling against changing the definition and narrowing too much in its code.
Okay, as far as narrowing it down. Okay, um. Okay, so a couple of things I just want to kind of be clear on is we, this is a recommendation to council. But we don't get to punt the ball to council, guys. It's our job to make a formal recommendation based on what this body feels to council. And councils frankly is expecting that from us. And at the end of the day, however this is written, we're going to be the ones that have to live with it. It won't really be the council. And I love them, but they are looking for our recommendation, our expertise on this. And so I'm I'm willing to stay with junk. I don't know what everybody else wants to do, if that pleases the group.
That if there are definition in the code, you said a junk, would you read?
Okay, yeah, it's, I just shifted it to that screen. It's actually right here. Highlighted.
I think I should say as it is then.
Okay. And then the next one that came up was, of course, I'm working backwards here. Financial institutions may have a presence within a building or standalone unit as an ATM. Is an ATM financial institution?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're looking up a bank location on your, say, your phone, or where I can find a bank, it pulls up ATMs just like it does any sort of brick and mortar bank.
It does.
And a lot of communities are starting to shift that definition. One of the reasons we wanted to make sure it got included is I suspect it's probably not the highest and best use on that site to desire a drive through ATM. Unless you have maybe a brick and mortar presence or a financial institution with it. That's kind of why we suggested putting it in there. Because something like that, if we, if if Wells Fargo or Bank of America came to us and say, we want to put, we want to have a presence in here, we're going to create a driveline and we're going to, we're going to do it. They absolutely will hang their hat on the term financial institution as to justify that they can do it from a permitting standpoint. So by clearly saying, okay, yes, it is a financial institution, but then in the specific standards, you say you must have a office location, or you must have a physical presence beyond just a drive through ATM. It doesn't exclude the possibility of a drive through ATM. It just means you can't just have a standalone ATM, which is the way a lot of banks have recently tried to, I won't say get away, well, I guess I just did, but a lot of them lean on that granular definition. So this is designed, again, with the idea you're trying to secure a certain type of development pattern and expectation. That's why we're suggesting it the way it was written. If you want to take it out, that's
This is saying that you can have an ATM as a presence.
Right, so if if it's okay, let's think of it this way. If if a if there was a bank that wanted to locate an ATM, say, in the Home Depot shopping center on Stark Street, that might be appropriate in general commercial. That's probably not a desired output, though, in the confluence property. That's what we're trying to get at, basically. It might be okay in one area to just have a limited exposure, because we know a lot of brick and mortar banks are not, they're not doing it as often. But if you want to have that physical presence, if you have a certain expectation for development outcome, then you should be that specific.
I'm sure in that particular project, they'd like to have someone in the bank they already have.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But again, that's just our suggestion. If you want to remove it, that's that's well within your right. We have other ways we could, we could try to limit that that other possibility.
And then the other one that came up was duplex?
So the definition is presented as the definition that we're expecting the state requiring us to have next year when they mandate the House Bill 2001 changes. So this is a state, a state's definition for how they consider, what they consider a duplex to be.
So two dwellings on a lot?
On a lot or parcel in any configuration, yep.
Okay. And
And if you have a situation where you have a you have a duplex, yet the property line divides it, that technically becomes a townhouse then. Based on the state's definitions.
Yeah, it's a good thing that we've got them writing definitions, because we got the county and we got metro too, so.
Well, apparently, they're going to
There's no confusion.
They're going to have to file in with the state definition, so.
I'm glad they got into land use, they're not doing very many other things well, so. Okay. Still on definitions, guys? Anything else on definitions? Commissioner Whitren, was your hand up, sir? No, you're in thinking mode.
No, but I was going to make a comment about the ATM piece, we do got to be cognizant of that, because the bank there on Hogan and Stark out in front of the Troutdale Liquor Store, where they actually have the ATM, what, 100 yards away from the bank? That's actually a drive through. You, we could wind up with something like that too, which would be pretty terrible. So. And then are we going back to the junkyard definition then? As a group, are we feeling that as that is defined in the code?
It would be a recommendation to change it at this point.
You want to change it to?
No, if you want to change it.
No, I I feel we should stick with the junkyard.
I think Commissioner Allen has his hand up.
Or Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I have a question just for understanding. On definitions that aren't referenced anywhere, what's the purpose of that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Allen, where are you looking at again?
Oh, so we're on definitions.
Right.
And you see definitions explained here, but not actually used anywhere that I found. And I wondered if there is a purpose for that, am I missing something?
So in attachment A on the report, excuse me one sec while I get to apologies.
A holistic cleansing of the development code. Go through and hit multiple chapters.
In this use table right here that you see, this is where we talk about what is allowed within the proposed zoning district.
Right.
Through your definitions here. So wherever ultimately they will be numbered, when we recalibrate the code, there will be a reference back to what that definition is. So when we talk about things like financial institutions, it would show up here.
Yeah, so like we were talking about junkyards, where is junkyards mentioned?
So junkyards are not actually listed, because junkyards are typically in industrial use. But why we had it in vehicular services is oftentimes we've seen people try to sneak it in. Like, you know, oh, I'm I'm working on cars, that's allowed in the commercial district. Well, that's not really the case. So that's why we made a clear distinction that when we're talking about vehicular services, which in this case, it wouldn't be allowed in the zoning district, but let's just say it was.
Yeah, so I
Junkyards, right?
I I kind of liked the the definition as you had it of junkyards in the sense that I I think it'd be terrible if this turned into one of those things. We've got a lot of money into the urban renewal. And to have it turn into a recycling yard of some kind or strictly residential, I think would would be a terrible disappointment. The other thing that I was thinking about is I wasn't actually totally comfortable with the parking part of it, and maybe that's part of understanding it. So I need to understand that more, but in general, I was concerned. So that that's my two cents.
Okay. Now, keep in mind that like a definition where it's not allowed is we're just updating the definition. Okay, so not all the definitions are actually going to apply to this.
Correct.
I think under the industrial uses, ally permitted uses, that we're talking about junkyards, that appears to be a C, isn't that conditional?
Yes, it showed as conditional, yeah. But I think I'll have to double check, but I think junkyards are only permitted in general industrial, unless I have that incorrect, I'll I'll take a look at that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I have to rely on our planners quite a bit by letting them know what my thoughts and intentions are. Because they understand better what this means. So yeah, I think it'd be terrible to see a a junkyard as defined in this area. And I don't know if there's any kind of missing loop that might get it in there. So I'm hoping our staff will catch that.
Yeah, it's, it would not be. Junkyards are only a conditional use and only in the general industrial zoning district. So that type of land use would not be permitted at all. Nor
Thank you for the peace of mind.
Let the record show.
Okay, so anything else on definitions? We just, we roll past that one, okay? I'm a head shake, okay? Well, I would say now we're into the meat of this. You guys okay with spinning from definitions into uses? You guys okay with spinning from definitions into uses? Is that all right? Or you guys want to go through the text first? Don't all speak at once.
I think it's your show.
Yeah. Okay, so let's start with uses. And a lot of these are going to be pretty easy. So residential, we are looking at allowing duplex, triplex, quadplex.
And again, the S that you see in that column means there's specific standards to it, which are then referred to in that last column where you can find out the details on it. The, just so required to the eight-two-oh and the four-six refer to really more specific design standards that are in the Town Center Overlay District. So that is already existing in code. That doesn't change anything. Three oh nine four is the very specific zoning district specific standard. And in this case, for instance, like the triplex, quadplex, it was suggesting that for better streetscape, you allow those types of, you require parking either on the side or the rear, not in, in the, in the front.
Okay. So we are required, right, to do which ones? Would you say residential?
By requirement.
By state mandate?
This is a, a mixed-use zoning district. You have to do something residential.
Right. Okay, so there's no where we're gonna have to meet a standard for that.
No, I mean, basically, the, the, the standard reflects a community expectation, which is reflected in the Town Center Plan. And the Town Center Plan talked about medium to high-density residential preference for homeownership opportunities, which is why you see a lot, why you see these middle housing typologies from duplex to townhome being allowed. And it also talked about multifamily vertical mixed-use being encouraged and allowed there too for potential condo development. That's why it's a permitted use.
And sheer multifamily too.
And I'm sorry?
And multifamily.
And multifamily. And that's if it's standalone. However you see, there are special requirements to that too. So in a way, you're also trying to by code calibrate your expectation for future development standards. If it's marked with a P or an S, it's something desired. If it's an S, you may have some more questions about it, but you, you want to be more specific about what it is you're actually looking for. If it's a C, it comes to this body, of course, and it's deserves further scrutiny.
Okay. For me, the ones I'd like, well, I don't want to start. Somebody want to go first on residential uses? Amber? No. Okay. I guess the two I'd like to at least consider would be when I look at age-restricted and residential facility. Those, when I read residential facility or residential care facility, residential training facility, treatment facility, training home, residential treatment home, conversion facility, or adult foster home.
I don't think from a applicant perspective, there's a strong opinion if you want to regulate that or not have it in there.
Okay.
We're not going to lose any heartburn on that one.
I just know what the, you know, the desires to have.
I think it was listed as permitted more so because it's permitted in pretty much all the other residential zoning districts at present. So if, if you feel it should be not in this case, that's fine.
Okay. And ADUs, we already talked about some of those would even be encompassed into another unit potentially.
Right. The, so on ADU specifically, and I'm going to jump ahead here real quick. The standards, the suggested standard is they have to be attached to the primary dwelling or an interior conversion. It couldn't be a standalone ADU. And what we're seeing is actually some developers, particularly for townhouse, townhouse development are creating built-in ADUs upon initial construction. So it's kind of a.
It's kind of what, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we, we had an example of that with the Lancaster Park Townhome Project, which is under construction right now. So we wanted to allow for that possibility, but we didn't want to create ADU built out there.
Yeah. And I, I think, you know, to, to your credit, I think you're going to have some of that down there. Not ADU built, but incorporated in.
Interior.
Yeah, with another development.
You could.
Okay.
So are you questioning whether it should be permitted or should be conditional?
I am, I'm questioning if it should be permitted and to go to maybe conditional.
Yeah, I think with the definitions, as they're here, it covers a lot, and I would agree it should be conditional.
Anyone else on that?
Yeah, I think it should be conditional because it has different, not to say it's different, but it's especially residential facilities incorporates things that may not be conducive for the confluence site as well as age-restricted housing.
I would, I would agree with that statement.
Okay.
So are those both conditional then?
Yeah, I would. I would do that.
Okay, both of them?
I, I would agree that they both should be conditional.
Okay. All right. Any opposition? Okay. And so does anyone have anything else on residential uses? Okay, cool. Okay. Commercial. So basically, we are openly permitting restaurants, bars, retail up to fifteen thousand feet or mobile food.
Individually placed in a park or right-of-way, but if it was individually placed on property itself, no.
Do we, do we need to allow them to be in a right-of-way?
No, I mean, you don't have to. Ultimately, just because it might be permitted by code doesn't mean it gets actually permitted by, because the Public Works Department would have to be ultimately the ones who agree.
Do we want to have that in here? Do we need to have that in here?
Well, right now, a mobile food vendor as currently defined is everything from a push cart, hot dog stand, and like an ice cream pop-up or even a lemonade stand, quite frankly. I would think you would probably want to make that distinction. Particularly, but, and, and particularly since we have a waterfront park, if we're looking at an opportunity to engage that park early on with some activity, that might be one way to do it. Staff would recommend keeping it in there for now.
Okay. I just didn't know if we're going to have in the right-of-way, if we get all the tents and everything, is there going to be different for everybody?
I, I don't think it'll happen in the right-of-way, honestly.
Okay. For that? It'll just happen?
We'll see.
Chris says it won't happen.
Okay.
It'll be my head on the stick, Mr. Whitton, right?
Right. Anything else for commercial uses? Any changes, edits? Heartburn?
On the second page, I know in the past, there's been some question about entertainment facility major.
And I think there were a couple of you who suggested conditional or not allowed, and a couple of you that were still on the fence, said that was one I suspected there would be a debate on tonight.
Yeah, I saw that.
One, one critical thing, and we kind of had that debate also in the spring about how to define it. And what we're, the threshold we're considering is transportation impact. Is it creating a transportation impact? As well as kind of describing, I'll, I'll go back to the definition so y'all can see it again, how we're distinguishing minor from major. And what we were trying to do by being descriptive was, you know, a minor facility is something located in a smaller space in a downtown or in a shopping center setting. So you could have that also in, say, general commercial or whatever. You're not looking necessarily to do a shopping center here, but a small space, a small commercial storefront in a vertical mixed-use building could be perfectly fine for a minor one. The major is really when we're talking about you have a fee or an age restriction. It's almost like a commercial amusement facility of sorts. And one that generates traffic impact. And given the nature of the site, given its proximity to eighty-four and two fifty-seventh, something like that would warrant a traffic review from Multnomah County, not just the city, because it has impacts on, on the signal right by the outlets. We would know pretty early on in a pre-application process if it was a major facility or a minor one. So we were also trying to be suggestive as far as what type of facility could be that. And ultimately, if there is ambiguity in the code, you've afforded the director the ability to make that call. The question is, do you want it there or do you not want it there?
For major?
Yeah.
Any comments on majors?
I don't, I don't think it, the confluence site would be a good place for a major one, only because like Rich, Chris said that it is going to put a heavy load traffic-wise on an already heavy-loaded road as it is. I mean, that light there is already impacting enough of the traffic just with the outlet now. So by putting a major entertainment facility in there would be counterproductive as far as traffic wise.
Could be.
But it would still be conditional and still have to come before us, right?
Correct.
Right, but.
Still.
It, it's conditional, but they have a standard.
Yeah, I mean, they have six decision criteria, one of which is proving you don't have a traffic impact.
Right.
Or the, the required improvements that you're proposing to make or being told you need to make are going to be, are going to mitigate initially.
So I guess I, you know, it's not like you can just say no.
Right.
Conditional. You know, you still have a, a criteria to meet. I mean, it does bring it before us. You are correct, Commissioner Whitton.
I just, forward-thinking, if something happens down the road and we are looking for a something to drive more traffic through there, something to bring more people in, who knows with the future? We may want something ten years down the road from now, and if we say no now, might hurt us later. We just don't know what the future brings.
Yeah, and that is a definite possibility. You know, and of course, the other side to that is when you open it up to more possibilities, you may end up with something that you don't necessarily want. So it's kind of a tough one.
It is a tough one, because also the other thing you have to consider is when, when a developer is considering development, or oftentimes they even ever talk with staff, they'll have people or they'll do it themselves. They'll look at the code. And if they say, see an N there, they're like, I'm not even going to bother with it because the community doesn't, has expressed it, doesn't want it. If they see a C, it's so-called, so you're saying I have a chance, at least have a conversation. If it's a P, then, you know, they'll resume to try to move forward with something. So it's almost like, do you know, are you able to, you feel strongly enough that it should not be there, then, then it should be there. If you're wanting to at least hear out a possibility, then it's probably more appropriate. And you still always have the no card that you can play. And honestly, that's a community value. That's not something we can, we, we as an applicant and a staff, we, we don't have, that's, that is the community's call, not our call. We don't have a preference one way or the other.
Could you, I don't know, the one, of course, that stares me in the face at casino. I mean, could you come up with a separate definition that said something like a facility where one deposits their entire life savings chance of increasing?
We'll have the Oregon Lottery for that.
Wouldn't that be considered a financial institution at that point?
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. I mean, yeah, I concur. It should stay conditional then. I understand now. Thank you.
Okay. I'm good with conditional.
Okay.
What about the other commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, just another consideration. We, we are, we are involved ourselves in this exercise to create from scratch this beautiful mixed-use area with, with, with ball vision, with opportunities. I must imagine also with the intent to expedite the process to create an incentive for economic development investment. And we're, 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 we're operating like a neurosurgeon right now in the definition. And, and strangely enough, now we find ourselves in this awkward situation where we have, because we changed two right now, potentially another one, we have twelve conditional uses and ten principal permitted uses. We create from scratch a zone with incentive to, to create, with, with intent to create an incentive for economic development investment. And we have more conditional uses. It's just as many as, as non-permitted users as we have as principal permitted users. It, it, it makes no sense whatsoever to me. And I mean, this, and I mean, this all respectfully, but it makes no sense. Yeah, we have the magic wand to create what we want. And we are not only, as I said in the past, imposing ourselves a schedule, it is unsustainable, because all these things are going to come in front of the commission. But suddenly, we create what we want with the vision that we want, with the logic that we want, and we have more conditional uses than we have actually principal permitted users.
Okay, so I guess my, my question would be like an entertainment facility major, you would propose that being permitted?
No, no, again, I, I would like to move myself from going line item by line item. And that's what I said from day one. When we were talking a long, long time ago, and I remember Commissioner Pickett also agreed with the sentiment that we have to have a flavor of what really was there. At this point, I believe, and this is personal sentiment, of course. And I don't mean to boast the other, I don't mean to be presumptive, but this come from having been a director and a city manager for the past thirty years, almost. To be presented with this code, code time and time again, in a city much, much larger or even similar size, that it makes no sense to me from a functional standpoint, from to create an incentive to economic development investment that we are creating from scratch. The Garden of Eden, and we create more conditional users and just as many prohibited users as we're principal permitted users. Something my mind is not working here, and I don't, I would like to prefer to remove myself to go line item by line item. This is not, this is not a neurosurgeon. We, we have to be very careful about the tail. That's why I say the details really is what, is what the problem. This is not, this is not a neurosurgeon. We, we have to be very careful about the tail. That's why I say the details really is where, is where the problems start. And that's why of everything, when we brought a code of this, of these consequences, is that be generic, make yourself a, you can protect yourself. Be very clear, there are very outstanding items you don't want there. But, but again, we, we are, this is very peculiar to me. We are, we have more conditional users than we have principal permitted users. And, and maybe I'm the only one feeling this way, and that's why I'm very cautious in my language, and maybe the, that, that my colleagues on the, on the, on the, on the commission, they say, Gianpaulo, thank you very much, but you're wrong. It's fine. But, but I, I, I think it would be remiss if I don't, if I don't identify and align this, 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 this item, it is peculiar to me. More conditional users, just as many a non-permitted users as principal permitted users. What, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to prohibit people from building? Or are we trying to create, open a window of opportunity where people say, come over here? Not, not, not with, without, with disregarding the code. No, we, not with trying to disregard the integrity of the code, but really we create an opportunity. We are the professional. We have been living and breathing the code. And so we can open a window of opportunity. And right now, it seems to me we are creating more, more bars beyond which you cannot do this, you cannot do that. Again, I, I gotta stop my, my, my comment right now. We have just, just as many a non-permitted users as could, as, as principal permitted user, and we have more conditional users, and we created this from scratch.
Okay.
It makes no sense.
Okay, so, and it, it may not make sense. I'll just tell you where I'm coming from, okay? And this is a piece of property that has been through a pretty big transition. And it's a major redevelopment in the middle of the city. We all know that. And you had a group of people that spent three years working on this, right? And so what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to take the town center plan and see what's in here and try to tie it back to this, because if we're talking about, let's say, a, I'll just pick on the one, Casino. If it's not in here, and we put it in as a, as we put it in as a permitted use, and these people didn't want it, and this is what got voted on, how, how do I connect the dots to that?
Mr. Chair, let me, let me preface that this was no mental having a debate with a commissioner or with the chair. But, but again, this is not the first time we write codes. We are not the first city to write codes. And, and again, while I understand that there is, have been a study before, and I understand there is this feelings about it. Mine was just a personal statement. If, if the rest of the commissioner, the majority of the commissioner disagree, then they disagree. But, but I, I felt that I come from a background where I have a specific opinion like all of you, and like I said before, I would be remiss if I don't state it. Then if colleagues on my, on the committee agree with me, good. If they don't, it's still good. But I, I, I think I would like, what I appreciate is the ability to have a robust conversation with my colleagues. And, and I'm, I'm not imposing my thoughts on anybody. I'm not demanding anything. I've just identified something that is extremely peculiar to me, to my experience. And I want to twilight it. Then, then if the commissioner says, Gianpaulo, thank you very much, but we do different, we do things different way here, and the vote is 6-1. The vote is 6-1. Their robust account, their robust conversations, what I appreciate here. That all of us have the ability to speak our mind, and we don't have to defend anything. We just speaks our, our mind, based on our preferences and our biases, on our experience, or even our just idea vision for the city. And that, mine was not a political statement, Mr. Chair.
No, no.
I want a debate.
Yeah, I was just trying to explain kind of where I was coming from and what I, the connection that I was trying to make. And are you talking about editing the code in general?
No, again, we're going to details, and, and maybe my, my intervention was, didn't use the appropriate wording here. I was just suggesting that it seems awkward to me that we are trying to create something. If, if we do this result, it's because we have something in mind. What is the ultimate vision? Because we want this to develop. We want to create an urban fabric that is an incentive to economic development investment, so that the city becomes sustainable, hope for opportunities. But when we start to create too many restrictive codes, when we start to create more conditional users, that as I say before, impose on the schedule of the, of the commissioner and slow down the process for developing investor selector, there is something that doesn't figure out to them. And, and I've been around long enough that I've seen it done a different way, and that's why I was identified this, this kind of discomfort about a process that final product has more conditional users and just as many prohibited users as it has a principal permitted users. That's it. And, and because again, I don't have the luxury to write a code. I'm just a commissioner like you to make, to make comments about the work of the staff and try to find an agreement, to find concordance of opinion with, with the rest of the, with the rest of the commissioner. That's, that's just a statement, just a voice. That's, again, didn't mean to be a debate, not a political statement. It was just, it was just a comment.
No, and I didn't take it that way. I just wanna say that, and debates are awesome. I love debates. A lot of great things come out of them. Commissioner Allen, you had a comment, sir?
Yes, I, I did. So if one were to talk about vision, I think what we've got to keep in mind is that we've got, as a city, millions into this property. And it's going to be financed or paid back by tax increment financing, meaning that there has to be enough of a development to actually get our money back out of it. So I'm not a, I'm not a real fan of the, the smaller developments, like a few duplexes or whatever would seek, that would hurt. And I, as a vision, I'd, I'd like to see businesses that are open to the public be on the ground level. And what would you call that? The vertical mixed use type stuff above it? So offices, residential, and that sort of thing. I guess the live-work units and the make units kind of fit into that. Above the ground, open to the public type businesses. So that's, that's just a thought, but I do realize, I, I, I like the point that there's a lot of people that worked on this already. And this is reflective of their vision. And I realize that I'm one voice out of many. However, I, I would like this body to consider what I'm saying here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So I guess the question is, are there some that we want to change, and if so, which ones?
We can continue our path that we were doing. And I agree with the statements on the entertainment facility major.
Okay. All right.
Rich, when you say you agree with the entertainment facility major, to keep it conditional or to strike it out altogether?
I, I think condition, conditional would be fine. We don't know what we, we will be offered.
Okay, anyone else? So conditional?
Conditional.
Okay, conditional it is. All right. I think the rest of these are pretty standard. Okay.
So to recap, the only thing we changed was the age restricted housing and the residential facility from permitted to conditional.
Age restricted and residential would go to conditional. And entertainment facility, right?
Remains conditional.
Remains conditional. So that one, you only have two changes.
That's right.
Okay, all right. Everyone okay with that?
Good here.
Less? Do you care? Okay. All right. Now we're blistering along into off-street parking, right?
Is that where you want to go next?
Oh, we might have a text.
That's, it's your call. Text is the next one up sequentially.
That's fine. Text it is. Okay, we are into text. Actually looking pretty good in the main.
And again, 3092, you just went through that exercise, so that, that one should be good, hopefully.
Oh, we can go through it, yeah.
No, let's not.
All right. Anything on 3091? 3092? 3093? 3094?
Question on 094?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Letter F. Questioning the 800 feet from 257th Drive. I'm not exactly sure where all 257th Drive goes through the property. I know it loops through the, the outlet malls, but I don't know where it goes from there.
I have, I have an exhibit, Mr. Wilcox, and I apologize, we didn't get it in the staff report. Let me pull it up here real quick. Okay, sorry about that. Just had to find it. Okay, so I'm showing you, I, hopefully you all see a map that shows an aerial image of the site in relation to the outlet mall. The horizontal line that you see from these green markings here, that's the edge of the right of way for 257th Drive. This line here that goes horizontal is 800 feet. The line that goes north and south basically just shows a rough approximation of where 800 feet is, although there are some adjustments here and there, especially on this northern side. What it's basically saying is that within this little strip right here, in, in, in this area that I'm, I'm kind of circling with my mouse here, that would be the only area really you could have something like that. It is a narrow area, but it is also an area where it allows maybe some flexibilities and potentially maybe downwind partnership opportunities with the outlets if they wished to take part in a development scheme. One of their big considerations has always been flexibility or allowance for drive-through potential. So this is a little bit of a possibility that they, or a partner of theirs, or, or whoever's developing that property could maybe have that allowance just in a very defined scope on the property. If that's too narrow or maybe not inappropriate, that's fine, but we thought it was an interesting way of approaching it, and that's why we put it in as a recommended standard.
Okay, Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know exactly where, where you were talking about.
We could have had a map in there for you. I apologize. We'll make sure that's in the council staff report.
Minimum building height of 25.
For the duplex and triplex, quadplex, that is really just a urban design consideration. A single-story building doesn't typically frame a street all that well if you're trying to create a denser, walkable environment. So if you go two-story, or at least of a two-story height, that does a better job of improving the, the community design element of it.
Okay.
As it also speaks to Councilor Allen's concern about whether duplexes in particular might be too, too light for, for that type of development, especially on the ROI for the TIF.
Good point. Okay, 3095.
Okay, 3095C. Just wanted to be upfront before, I don't, I don't want to blindside anybody, but I'm opposed to these higher limit, height limits. I think there's a segment of the tribal population that would agree that they don't want 55 to 75-foot buildings. I know I'm on the minority end of this, but I just wanted to kind of represent those people that don't want many high rises in the, in the URA.
Okay. How many have you are?
And Chris, that goes along with our previous discussion about the height of the water tower and not, yeah, okay.
Okay, anyone else opposed to the 55 height? And 55 would be a type two. And 75 would be a type three. All right. So next up would be?
We have, we have three sections that are reserved, just sequential numbering, in case there's ever any desire to incorporate other standards. The last one is the additional requirement section. That, that was what I referred to earlier in my presentation of a take it now or leave it now approach to whether or not you want to include it, at least within this initial text amendment. So from a staff perspective, from an applicant perspective, if you do not like it, or if you do not have consensus comfort with it, that is okay, and make that your recommendation to us that we set that aside for another discussion and another text amendment. The, the difficult issue here, it's not so much A, B, or C. The difficult issue probably will be D. And that was also spoken to by Ms. Castillo White earlier about off-street loading and parking. But let me, let me provide a little context before you, you dive into your, your concerns. Again, as, as Ms. White had mentioned, one of the ideas that came out of the town center effort was this idea of a centralized or structured, or at least consolidated parking area. That could be better connected also with downtown, maybe through a bridge or some other direct connection. So if that is kind of an intended general development goal for the area, what can you do through code to kind of help that effort along? You can't, you can't say in a code, you will build a parking garage. You're not gonna get a lot of traction with any development to do that. So the code in this way actually acts as a little bit of a carrot. The negotiation element, when, because the agency happens to own the property here, is the stick. If a developer, say, wants to bring in 300 housing units, X number of square feet of commercial space or whatever, and really wants to do it, and wants it to look a certain way, and people are excited about that way. But because our, our off-street parking standards on a lot-by-lot basis suggests you need to accommodate a certain number of parking Number of parking space on that lot, that architecture could get, or that urban design plan could get very screwy. So what we're suggesting you do is you allow certain flexibilities in what you require for an off-street parking space on each potential lot that could be created within the larger lot. If your desired goal is a consolidated or shared use facility. Entice it through these types of concessions that we have listed out here, but understand that the city. When selling this property or potentially working with developments through public-private partnership still has a stated goal of a consolidated facility that benefits not just this property and the zoning district. But also downtown. So that's why we're suggesting these concessions could be appropriate. If you feel like you need more time to think that one through or see how that works, that is completely fine. But from a sequencing standpoint, from a timing standpoint. Staff really would like to have. This zoning district in place this summer, so we can begin to work on solicitation. If we're not comfortable with this section, if this committee isn't comfortable with this section. Then let's just suggest we remove it for the time being. If you have a measure of comfort or consensus of comfort tonight, then you can move it forward for the same justified reasons we we just discussed. So understand if you're not comfortable with it, we're okay, but we really would like to get the rest of the. Three oh nine one through three oh one nine five through tonight.
Okay, any comment on three oh nine nine?
I would actually like to look at it another time.
Okay. So you're a yank?
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Okay, uh, anyone else? For stay or go at this point?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes. Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, so I was fine with A, B, and C. And then D, I like where. Chris was going with with the parking. And so perhaps I don't understand this as as well as I probably should. I'm fine if there's parking that's in like a parking garage or in a central area. This whole area is meant for people to be able to walk around and so forth. And so I'm fine with that, I don't necessarily need a parking space tied directly to the business, as long as. There's parking available that somebody could actually visit this area. And that's the main thing I'd like to get to is that there is actually parking. But if that's in a structure, that would be equally as good to me.
Okay. And so when you're talking about parking. You know, you do have in here that you can reduce parking if there's a structure within five hundred feet.
Yeah, we said facility because if this is a phased development, it could be surface parking for the time being.
Yeah.
So we just said facility, but that means structure as well.
Okay. And you, so that would be acceptable, Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay. I want to run. Okay, anyone else?
I'll I'm in and say I am comfortable with that. Enticement out there and number three, I think that goes a long way of trying to get the. Enticement of a structure built, so. I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moni?
I'm sorry, did you call me, Mr. Chair?
I did, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, I I concur with Commissioner Pritchett, I think. Personal opinion, this demands a little more refinement for 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 my taste. I am a little also confused, this is personal, this is a personal preference by the negative at the beginning, I'm reading D two, for example. So what we're trying to say there, if we remove the no at the beginning is. Off-street parking and loading shall not be required for no residential users, let's say, commercial users between five thousand and fifteen thousand square feet of gross floor area. And I think that's, that's why I agree with Commissioner Pritchett that we need a little bit more, because I think there there should be something. More, because to me that is a statement that is an absolute statement, shall not be provided. While maybe we shall not be provided adjacent to the building, and that's why I agree with with the director, there should be an incentive. Somewhere in proximity within five hundred feet, but then the language should should introduce that, because in my mind, it it opens up interpretation. So while while appreciate the the. The effort to try to, for lack of a better English, entice to create this marketing transaction with the applicant. I I think that a little more refinement in the language, so that is, doesn't open itself to interpretation, again, I'm reading number D two. If we read it as off-street parking and loading shall not be required for no residential users, let's say, commercial, between five and five thousand, fifteen thousand square feet of gross floor area. And I mean, I think that all of us envision that adjacent to the building, like usually is the standard on a single lot. Then then if that is the intent, then we should say that, because. Provided then, then, if you cannot put it just into the building, you have a parking facility located within a public accessible, the parking within five hundred feet. So in the end, summarize everything, I agree with Commissioner Pritchett, I think we should take a look a little more in detail about. Just to help the language to to be a little more specific.
Okay. Point well taken, and I agree with her. Okay. Oh, there he is, Commissioner Wilcox.
Thank you, Chair Stephenson, I question the idea of shared parking where it's commercial during business hours and residential after hours.
Your question is whether we want to do it? Or I'm sorry.
Right, yeah.
In a lot of settings, it actually works pretty well. Some it doesn't, but I've seen quite a few where it's where it's done well. You?
Um, yeah, I, staffs have the opinion that in certain locations or settings or development schemes, it can work, provided you you set the expectation early and you have. An ample amount, because it can, there are are opportunities for overlap, but. We presume in in this type of setting for this type of zoning district, it could be workable. But. If the the private sector, the the market forces also have to agree with that sentiment, too.
Right. So would you like to approve three oh nine nine, or would you like to table three oh nine nine?
Personally, I'd table it.
I think we're going to move this whole package forward, we should move it also.
Along with it?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a tally of four to three.
I would be okay with doing some more refinement on the off-street parking and loading.
Okay, so he's moving, now it's five two.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay, so what I've got now is we are going to vote, or I should say. We've taken a straw poll to table three oh nine nine, so do you want to rework that?
Well, what we can do, I mean, we we have time, we can effectively. Strike it from your recommended draft to council, so council would see three oh nine one through three oh nine five. That would be what they would be voting on next Tuesday and the following Tuesday. And three oh nine nine, we'll we'll just make a reference that Planning Commission will continue to study. Off-street parking and loading requirements, and it could come back before you. In the fall or in the winter.
Okay.
If it needs more time in the oven, that's okay, that's, but again, we're, the staff motivation here is to try to have the district established. And we can work out those details. Soon.
Okay.
So I guess that would require just a more formal action, Mr. Chair, that you would just. Edit the. Attachment A to strike through. Three oh nine nine. In preparation for the council package.
Okay, so. I'll just throw this out, here's what I have. Okay, so far. Is that we would approve. Changes that we would make would be. On. Three point zero zero two in the table, we would be changing age restricted and residential facility to conditionals. And on the subsequent page. No, it's already conditional. We would not be making a change there, and we would be striking. Three zero nine nine. A through F.
And we did not change definitions on junkyard, we left that the same, correct?
Correct. We actually changed any definitions. Any? Do I have that right, guys?
I believe so.
Okay. If anyone likes that, fire away.
I move that we recommend. The, yeah, 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 text amendments. And changes to the table as we discussed, along with striking. Three oh nine. Hang on a second, three oh nine nine, A through F.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for case file seven five dash zero six, urban mixed-use housing. And we can take this one, correct?
You mean by by.
One motion?
And you also have to discuss the map amendment, too.
Okay. And. The edits are. To three point zero zero two. And writing three point, three point zero nine nine, A through F. And any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Commissioner Whitton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wooddilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Sorry if you can hear my dog barking in the background. Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, okay. And.
Yeah, staff has no further comments on. Questioner, all owned by the Urban Renewal Agency, who requested as applicant. Recommend approval. Of. Map amendment.
All right, any questions on the map amendment?
Um, Mr. Chair? I move that we recommend the proposed map amendment to the rezoning district map to the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second in case files five dash zero six, urban mixed-use zoning district. Or proposed map amendment to the zoning district map. As presented, any question on the motion? Okay.
Commissioner Whitton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wooddilla?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Oh.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes. Okay, that passes, congratulations, you have an M V three.
Thank you, Commissioners, that was a lot to go through and appreciate your diligence and your expertise is always.
I'll take five?
Five minute recess?
Yeah.
Your call.
Do that? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and so we'll be back. Nine fifteen, okay? Thank you, we are in recess till nine fifteen.
Start that again.
So can you get the puppy to bark? That'd be like our official, no, okay.
Yeah, sorry, she was asleep, she's been asleep the whole meeting, and then I started talking, she's like, oh, someone's awake? Now is the time to bark.
Long night for you tonight.
Yeah.
Back in session, everyone. And next up, correct, we are oh seven.
We are in seven five oh seven, yes, we're we're double taking on another text amendment for you tonight, another one that we had discussed earlier this spring, and is now coming to fruition, that is. Determining if we can, if it's wise to set specific or unique standards for age-restricted housing. I don't really have a a PowerPoint. I know it's also late, but this one is pretty direct, and it really looks at three particular aspects of. Of age-restricted housing, well, the the first being this, age-restricted housing. As is intended by this code is no different than any other multifamily residential, whether it be apartment or condominium, imagine a standard apartment or condo. It just happens to have an age restriction deed or covenant on it. It is not the same as an independent living facility that may be coordinated with a company or an a, you know, an age-as-you-go type facility or retirement home or a nursing home. Those are distinct and separate from the type of definition we're seeking, so this is a multifamily unit, apartment or condo. That just has a fifty-five and over requirement with some allowances as determined by the feds through through HUD standards, housing and urban development standard. One of the reasons we wanted to look at this section is increasingly, as we continue to be built out. In the A two zoning district. The CBD zoning district and your recently hopefully approved MU three zoning district, you have a finite amount of land. And some of those properties are smaller and becoming increasingly more difficult to develop if you apply typical development standards to them. Case in point, most apartment development will require a percentage of open space. And most apartments, when they're looking at that, when they're looking at at fulfilling it, they'll do a dog run or they'll do a playground. Well, you're not necessarily going to have to build a playground if you're catering to a fifty-five and over community. So do you need as much open space, that's kind of on that topic. The second one is parking. Right now, you have a prevailing standard throughout the city of two spaces per unit with every third unit getting an additional space, two point three three is your parking ratio. If you're talking about an age-restricted situation, you're talking about households that are either one or two people. And I can't, I have not found any real standards where an allowance of more than one, or more than two is typically the treatment. So you're also then talking. So you're also then talking about one, maybe two-bedroom type units typically. But you're also talking about situations where you will have households that may have one or two cars. Or in some cases, if it is tied with an income restriction, many of these facilities don't have residents that have no vehicles. A lot of times, these facilities are also paired with disabled services. So your parking standard generally is decreased and we'll speak to a couple of examples on that. So then if you're looking at reducing the amount of required parking potentially and reducing the required land area or recreational area, then it's also natural to look at, hey, we're not using as much space on the property. Maybe our minimum lot size, our base level minimum lot size could also be reduced. So those are basically the three things that we're looking at. They're intertwined. But it's designed that you can still accommodate housing, increase the variety of housing you bring into the community, which is fulfilling a state land use requirement, a statewide goal requirement. And you're also opening up developability of these smaller infill lots that right now, based on market conditions and future presumptions of costs to construct, you're opening up these possibilities for these types of units to actually be built. So those are the large motivations. And the city is the applicant because the city has seen several of these proposals come forth. There is a significant interest in developing these types of proposals. But they cannot pencil out, they cannot actually function on potential desired lots that they're going to be located in. So we think that these three concessions are logical, reasonable, and they have factual basis to back them up. The staff report on page two basically goes into the background that I just gave. On page three, there's a map that showcases where in the city we're talking about. I'll go ahead and share my screen here again. So folks who don't have the packet can take a look at it again. Give me one moment. So again, the areas we're talking about, these are three zoning districts that apply. The MU3 district, which has not been established, is just off the map, but it's confluence property. But you're talking about kind of the downtown core, some of the perimeter areas within the town center, and then a few other areas close by. On the parking standard in particular, one of the things that we would suggest that if you are thinking about reducing parking, well, people still need to get around. And pretty much most jurisdictions that consider these types of breaks, particularly for senior housing, usually mandate and with good reason proximity or, you know, adjacency to a transit line, a standing transit line. So these maps show the three, actually four lines that we have in the city in comparison to the areas in red where potentially developability of this type of standard could occur. You have line 77, which runs along Halsey Street, which is now at a 20-minute per headway. Basically, it's 20 minutes between buses, which is far better than it was even just a couple of years ago when it was an hour between buses. You have line 81, which runs down 257th right here. That is now on a half-hour interval. It connects Mountain Community College with the Amazon FedEx area, the trip areas. You have line 20 here on Stark Street, which kicks west to Portland and ties in with Mountain Community College. And then you have line 80, which runs down Troutdale Road and also connects down to Gresham Transit Center. That's an hourly service. Key thing to note about this is that the areas that are highlighted in red, many of them are already developed. So we're really looking at only a handful of properties remaining that are truly developable or redevelopable in the city or could be reclassified in order to maybe accommodate these standards. And these aren't standards that they must meet. If a developer wants to offer more parking or wants to offer additional space, that's their right if they wish to do that. What this is just saying is that, hey, we understand the uniqueness of your residential situation. The city is willing to concede these types of standards if that can make your development actually function and actually be cited, positioned, funded, constructed, and ultimately a return on investment if you're, of course, a private developer. I think I should probably just stop here. I'll go ahead and take any questions. And if there's any specific topic of the three that any commissioner would want to get into, that's fine. But that's the staff report. I can take questions and then we can move into the hearing or the public comment.
Okay, any questions for staff? Commissioner Allen?
Hi. Last time we had talked about this, I was asking about any kind of studies of the parking, other developments and what their parking was and whether their parking was sufficient to give us an idea of what the number should be, because I can agree that 2.33 spaces can be reduced. However, I felt like one space per unit was maybe too much of a reduction. I was more in the 1.66 range. However, I'm open to any observations made on other developments as to whether their parking is sufficient or not.
Sure. On page six and seven, Commissioner Allen, I did get into a little bit from a, from a, I guess, industry standard, if you will, which is the Institute for Transportation Engineers, the IT manual. It's effectively the, like, the bible of determining traffic impact, parking requirements and so forth.
I read it all the time, don't you guys?
Yeah, it's by my bedside table. It's very scintillating. Does the trick, though. They actually have a special unique category for senior housing. They see it as distinctive from other types of residential housing arrangements. And where you see the distinctions are, is what we call in two areas. One's called average daily trips. How many, how many average trips might this type of unit generate in a day? Well, if you're, that's not to suggest people over 55 couldn't get out of the house more than three and a half or four times a day. But if you're not running kids around or anything like that, your chances of making regular trips compared to a standard family or a family that has multi-generations is typically lower. Now, I stress, too, that senior housing in this case is a larger umbrella. It can mean perfectly able people. It can also mean disabled people. So there is a catch to that, that category. So I want to be completely direct with it. Also of interest is, are the trips that are being taken during the time of rush hour, they call it the peak PM hour? What is the, the chances of those trips occurring? Most people who are under 55 work and often have historically, anyway, based on engineering standards, commuted during times of PMP rush hour, whether that be, you know, after school, when school lets out, so forth. PMP can vary, actually depending on the street and depending whether or not a school is on it or not. So it would be evaluated with a traffic study. But what, what the engineering standards find is that you're one-fourth, you are, let me rephrase it, you're about 73% less likely to take a trip. That type of household or that type of house, people who live in that housing arrangement will often not take a trip as often during that time as somebody who's in a standard, single-family detached or a multifamily, other type of multifamily arrangement. That's what the engineering studies suggest. As far as the actual parking standard there for them, 2.33 is the regular standard. Previously and actually currently in the code, we had a definition for congregate housing, which is far more restrictive. That is really more, I hate the word institutional, but it's, that's basically what it is. It's basically people who have the inability to either care for themselves or require a lot of help to get around. That's the opposite end of the spectrum from a senior or disabled housing arrangement. And that standard in our code is one space for every three beds. So finding that happy medium in between where you're suggesting from an engineering point of view, there are, there are fewer trips generated than the typical multifamily household. But it's certainly not a congregate housing level. So we suggest one here in the staff report. You might be at 1.66. What we find is that most cities are usually in that 0.75 to 1.25 range. And that includes suburban communities, too. That is not just a Portland-centric thing. The city of Eugene, for instance, is at a one. And Eugene is not Troutdale. I don't want to claim that otherwise. But either even suburban cities and other areas that are even more car-dependent than we are, that have fewer transit options than we have usually have that standard. There is a city in Utah that is north of Salt Lake. It is bountiful, Utah. I don't know if you know it, a little bit north of Salt Lake, they defer to a one or one and a half standard depending on visitor amenities as well as proximity to a bus line. That was a pretty good standard we were comfortable with. That was easily obtained. So. If you look at, I mean, you can go a variety of ways with it. We offered one as an opening bid, but ultimately it's, it's the community value. And considering, too, you're in a commercial in, in the town center area, particularly if you're in the central business district, you may have opportunities for on-street parking or in some cases, off-street parking. That is not tied to the unit. That could also accompany any overflow or guest parking where it is at least minimally impactful to actual single-family neighborhoods, which has always been the concern about wanting a higher threshold for multifamily parking.
So, yeah, I can see some of the logic there. I do have older friends and relatives that have older cars with very low miles. However, they do still park them. And I'm concerned about, or one of the complaints I've heard a lot while on council was not enough parking. I also see that in my own life when I try to visit my mother-in-law and there's nowhere to park. So I think as an industry standard, we typically underdo it. And I think that's because there's cost reasons to do so. However, I don't think it really helps with livability. There are places without parking tend to be harder to do business and more stressful. At least for people like me to find a spot or maneuver in. So I would personally would rather be higher than one. However, I leave that out there. My suggestion was 1.66. I leave that out there for the other commissioners to get their opinion.
Commissioner Allen, if it pleases, right now we're doing questions for staff. And then we'll take testimony. Other questions for staff? No? Going, going. Okay, is there anyone wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Anyone wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Month forward.
Hello, Diane Castillo of Troutdale. There's a number of things I'd like to to bring up for, for your, consider or to ponder. One is on the map, we have the home forward proposal, which is next door to this community center. I forgot how many units are being proposed. But it's really hard for me to see that that will not impact parking in, in downtown Troutdale if that area is reduced to one parking space. Some are proposed, I believe, as one bedroom, some as two bedrooms. I'm not sure how the state is going to dictate how many people can live in that unit and if they all have to be 55 years or older or what restrictions to have a younger person live with them or, or family. Because I know there's certain standards, like in, if you have a two-bedroom, there could, I believe there could be as many as four-plus people living within that unit. And I don't know what Home Forward is going to mandate within their, within their facility. Another thing is that in the confluence, confluence site. I'm concerned about on page six. Number four, where it says age restricted housing is sometimes paired with income restricted, restricted housing. And so I'm not sure what kind of income restricted housing that would be. We talked about the confluence area during the town center and we were trying to encourage homeownership or high-end housing, which we were deficient in that in the housing study. And I do not know what percentage of income restricted housing may be allowed in the confluence area. That is a concern of mine as well. And then town center, we had multiple open houses. And the, the phrase that kept, kept coming up was the small-town feel. So again, I'm not sure about restricting to one parking. I believe what Mr. Allen said, that if you're having a struggle to find parking, that it, it creates a little anxiety. Again, I'll case in point, there's a salt and straw and I can't remember the, the location that it is. It's not in the Northwest 23rd. But that was really easy to access and get to and there was always a line. There's a lot of housing that's been developed there that are multi-story near the area now. And it is harder to get to, to salt and straw. I'll go by there and see how many blocks I have to park. And if it's a couple of blocks, it just might be a no-go. There's also some other stores there and they all look, again, it's COVID, so this isn't a good time to analyze, analyze that as well. But I, I don't want to provide a hardship to the businesses in downtown. So I, I believe those things should just be considered. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify as a opponent or neutral party?
I believe you have Counselor Lance.
Okay, Counselor Lance?
I, I'm really opposed to cutting back on parking, maybe in just the most minor ways. I know we had stuff allocated in for guest parking. But the very, when I first became a planning commissioner and they sent me to the, you know, planning training that they give you through the LOC, I remember the very first thing they told us was the way to keep people friends and your community happy was to make sure you had adequate parking. That people start getting cranky with each other when there's not enough parking. They don't visit businesses and the businesses get cranky. And it's just, you're not setting yourself up for success by not allowing for enough parking. Maybe there are other ways to look for parking alternatives. I appreciate that, you know, 20 years from now, parking may be an entirely different environment. But right now, I feel like there's a lot of people with, you know, still navigating COVID types of situations. And there's a lot of vehicles that, while they might not make a lot of trips, are still needing to be put someplace. And I know if I'm a neighbor to one of these developments and all of a sudden, every time I look at my living room window, there's two cars that just sit there or sit there most of the time, that doesn't make me feel good about the development that goes in there. If we truly want to get affordable housing and make that attractive and part of our community, I think cutting back parking is kind of what's the expression, biting off your nose just by your face or whatever that is. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Counselor.
Yeah, Sandy, I agree with what you just said. And Rich, I was really struck by what you said about, I believe it was your mother-in-law. Is that correct? You trying to visit her. That really made me think, too, if you're struggling to find parking, what about the actual residents? And, and if somebody's, say, disabled, you know, and they're having that same experience, I mean, whenever I mean, whenever there's a situation where there's not enough parking, you have to park far away and walk. So, you know, I would just hate to put people in that situation that are in this demographic anyway. And also I want to be intentional as a city about who were specifically incentivizing to build in town. And so I'm probably not telling you guys what you don't already know already, but I do kind of want to go over a couple of numbers from the housing needs analysis. And it and we have a low-end deficit in the town of 611, but we have almost double the deficit of high-end housing at 1,054. And so if that's after, at the end of the day, we conducted this study and found that we have a really pressing need to attract high-end housing, then we should look to incentivize high-end housing. And and in my mind, you know, it's, this is really an incentive to to bring in, you know, age-restricted development, whereas, you know, Troutdale is already friendly to to that. But but where do we make that special? That special effort? And I think that the numbers really tell the story of where our efforts should go. And and that's really with the high end. And we have so little land left to develop that I would just really I don't have anything obviously against, you know, age-restricted housing or anything like that. But I do, I think that the numbers tell a story and we need to pay attention to that and and really look at where we're being intentional, like I said, about offering incentives to developers.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify as an opponent or a neutral party? All right.
Diane Castillo, again, I just want to say there may be some areas that I'm looking at that may be appropriate that might work for one one vehicle. So I'm just not, like I said, that which impacts the downtown, but there there might be like a, looks like there's something here on 257th and Cherry Park Road. And that looks like it might be a good spot where it would be contained. So I'm just going to say that there might be some some cases that that may be appropriate. Follow one and say thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And counselors, when this comes to you, I think they would need to disclose that they testified. Okay, so just make sure when it comes to council, because it's a type four, I believe you're allowed to do that, but you just need to disclose that at your meeting.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay. And with that, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just to clarify that, my eye was four. I was just a little delayed on on muting.
We're flexible. All right. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would I be able to show a couple of exhibits real quick because I didn't get the chance for rebuttal?
Yeah, you want to rebut?
Just real quick, and I'm not trying to do a rebuttal necessarily to any one testimony, but I think it's illustrative a little bit to look at where parking standards are right now with recent multifamily development. I'm going to show you a couple of images from recently approved and nearly 90% occupied Cherry Park Townhomes.
What time of day are we looking at here? I guess you can see the sun on that one.
Yeah.
What would that be about? This is about seven o'clock in the evening as of yes, or as of a couple of days ago. It doesn't look all that different at nine o'clock at night, I might add, and I don't have an image because obviously the image quality would be a little worse. This is not obviously a senior housing facility, but this is a housing facility that is currently at least not served by transit. What I would submit to this mission respectfully is that your existing parking standards are already going far above and beyond what the actual need and impact is on parking in a facility. That's based on observational perspective, and that's been confirmed by the developer and the management company. So with respect, one of the reasons we're saying this is because when you're talking about a finite availability of land, how best to use that land? Parking is expensive. Contributing parking or requiring parking on a on a property means that much less property that could be developed otherwise. So I would caution concern, and while the concerns are completely verified and justified and completely defensible, I just want to introduce another thought on that. You only have a finite amount of acreage. How do you want that acreage? What is the highest and best use? What contributes to the community and community design and the community fabric? One of the reasons we're bringing this up is just a different way of thinking about it, particularly if you have technology changes in the next 10 to 20 years, because ideally, if you build something, it's going to be there for more than that. That's why we're bringing it up to you, not to be disagreeable, but just to give a recent perspective as far as thinking about how this this topic could be and how how maybe to be driven it. And maybe trying it in a sandbox way just for this type of development. We're not asking you to change multifamily parking standards right now, but maybe
Yeah.
for case, it's okay.
And I guess if I was going to just add on to that discussion, it would be I don't think we have the same parking issues up there that we do down in the town center.
Completely fair.
And the other thing is, one of the things we talked about tonight was the developer can put in as much parking as they want. And when that particular application came up, they elected to add parking.
Eight more spaces, though, not not a significant huge.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but they added spaces to kind of appease the community at that time. They may be overparted, and I don't know. I know they're not full. But, you know, if we're dropping them, we're dropping the parking standard like between 57 and 85%. That's substantial, too.
It is substantial. I don't disagree.
I, during this school, this school year, because of COVID, we did a lot of drop-off for students who needed, whose parents worked and couldn't pick up or get items that they needed for their students to be successful. And I found that a lot of places, I had, I had a hard time either parking, I had to park away from there and walk it up to the door because there was no place to park. And that was just within the Troutdale area. I mean, there were several times I had to figure out how to maneuver my car in in order to get out. Because they were, I mean, if you go across from the high school, the housing development across the high school, they're parked on the street as well as in their driveway. So and and that's housing. So I'm not sure parking, we can, they can always ask for a reduction. But once you take that away, you can't give it back. And parking, I'm sorry, but parking is the key, like she said, makes good neighbors if you have good parking. My son lives in over near Barlow and they only have one off-street parking and two in the driveway. And if there's a family event, you can't park, you have to park out on the on the main highway in order to get parked. So I'm sure I'm not in favor of reducing parking at this point, but they can ask for less. But to make it permanent, no. Because once you take it away, you can't give it back.
Thank you. Hi, anyone else?
I had a comment in relation to Eagle Ridge.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
Thank you. I've compared the rental rates at Eagle Ridge compared to Northbrook. That's the new Fairview development across from stomping grounds on Holsey. And I know that I don't know the exact standards in Fairview, but I know for sure that they're less than Troutdale's. Like, I do think Troutdale's are excessive, by the way. But my, the point, point I wanted to make is the rental rates are almost identical. So the the people in Fairview are not passing along the savings that they've they've enjoyed by providing fewer parking spaces. There's no guarantee that a senior house developer would do would do anything differently either.
Good point.
Fair.
Yeah. Okay. And did you have anything else, Commissioner Wilcox?
That was it.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, just for the clarity of the proposal, was there any discussion on recreation space or the minimum lot size?
We have not had any discussion on those yet.
I mean, I know popular, parking is the nuclear issue, but I'd be curious about the commission's stance on the other two.
Do you guys have any comments on those two?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mr. Morning.
Thank you. Just a consideration, I had told me that I had started my analysis as my final approach to this case in a specific way, but I had told me that listening to the testimony this evening and even more to the compelling argument of my colleagues, I I I think we have to reconsider the parking issue. I don't know to at what at what level. My analysis at the beginning was, I agree with the stop proposal. I'm fine. The the area as identified by the director is so nominal, it's so minimal that I thought there is, there is, there is no concern really. And again, and I don't have to agree with everything is being said, but I agree conceptually in in the rationale, the logistical approach. You know, 55 years old. Yes, you know, we can reduce the the open space and even the child play area, like we usually do 50% of the open space to child play area. There is no need. I was chuckling a little bit because, you know, 55, we have a conversation like we're talking about decrepit people. I barely barely break the major, the age barrier of 55. So like, no, no, wait a second, you know, and and even more if the standard is ADT, average daily traffic. I don't know if because of my hobbies, going to a deeper or cooking or because of senility, I can by myself increase the ADT by 50% just by myself. So that that's why you have to be careful. But being being funny outside, um, you know, we couldn't, I, I, I changed completely my approach. And I think that that the my colleagues and and the and the council made a compelling argument. I think we have to be a little bit careful about this. Maybe there's an incremental decrease, maybe 166. Maybe it's an alternative way to find a strategy. Maybe his, in this case, I went, you might laugh at me, Mr. Chair, but what I'm, I'm proposing that the commissioner to be more involved, maybe demanding a parking analysis every time this developer on this case. In the end, the area identified is so nominal that I'm really no concern. Anyway, my colleagues, I want to go, I'm fine to approach a compromise and a consensus approach. So but but I would like to identify again, this outstanding situation. I think we need to be a little more careful, as many of my colleagues have identified, this 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 decrease in parking. It could be coming back to us really.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Whitman?
I'll just add my two cents as well. I mean, on face value, I looked at it, you know, you look at lot size and it's less cost and less recreational size and it's less cost, less parking, less cost. But at the end of the day, as we're a voice for Troutdale residents, there's no guarantee that any of this is going to get passed on to the resident or be be of a less of a burden for 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 their for their rent or or payment. So the more we talk about it, the more I just have a hard time accepting this, I guess.
Well, and recreational wise, now that we are more aware of our health and we take more care of ourselves, there are fewer and fewer, hopefully, fewer of a, I still walk a lot, I still drive. But recreational wise, there's now, there's a lot of people that play pickleball, lawn bowling. Things that seniors normally putting green, that stuff would is recreational for some for seniors. And being that I am well past the age of 55, I'm not ready to sit in a rocking chair and wait for someone to take care of me. I want to be out there in the community and you can't be if you're restricted in any way.
How are we defining recreational open space?
A recreational area space. So there's basically, it's a definition, but it's it's two-part. What it's reading from page seven, it says basically onsite recreational facilities or open space are required. So you have passive recreation space or passive open space. That could be just a grassy area where maybe you do croquet or or whatever activity it might be. It's kind of a versatile space, but it's not really active. An active would be a playground, a basketball court, a tennis ball, a tennis court, a pickleball court, something like that, something where there's deliberate energy that's designed for it, if you will.
Or even just an outdoor seating area or anything like that.
And and to be clear, what what the proposal is suggesting is not doing away with that requirement whatsoever. What it's saying is that just minimizing the amount of square footage or acreage allocated for it. And the other thing to make mention of it, this can be indoor or outdoor. So, you know, a lot of multifamily communities will have an indoor recreation room or, you know, a sauna or a workout room that counts as as part of that that space. So what we're saying, though, is they still have to provide that, but the proportion, the the amount of space that they're required to have based on the number of units they have can be reduced to a degree. And that just is a concession again, because you're dealing now with some smaller tougher, more tougher to develop properties that are having confined spaces. And that's one of the areas we could see a lot of variances come out of if you don't have a break like that. So if you want to do it from a case-by-case perspective, that's fine. But I think part of the idea here is not only a concession for development, it's also ease of application too. And taking you folks out of persistent variance applications that could come about, whether it's parking or if it's recreation space.
Okay, and the 25% reduction in lot base?
Again, if you're comfortable with one or the other, or if not, even if you're not, one of the things to consider here is the developability of a parcel. One of the things that we are not allowed to do in the city is provide a variance to the minimum lot size that it's One of the things that we are not allowed to do in the city is provide a variance to the minimum lot size that it's required to be for development. If if you don't want to change anything on recreation or parking, and I completely understand why, and ultimately it's the community's value that should should rule the day. Please at least consider that to be at least a variable standard, because right now it's very difficult. We're running into a couple of situations with prospective development, and no, it's not home forward, I would add, where we're running into that issue. And it's.
With lot size.
With lot size, meaning that, you know, if you have, if you're intending to develop X number of lots, you need to have a minimum of Y square feet. And we're prohibited from looking above or below that number or below that number. And sometimes that number is off only by 1,000 or 2,000 square feet and. It's nothing we can do. We can't take it to you all to get a variance on that. So if if you see any wisdom in that, if we can accommodate. That or treat it like a standard variance for that specific case for senior housing or for age restricted housing. That's helpful, at least for staff and potentially helpful for development of certain property. Even if you don't want to do the other things.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
What's your minimum lots you're talking about, Chris?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question again, Commissioner?
What's your what's your minimum standard lot size currently?
It depends on the number of units you're trying to develop. Let me pull up a table here. The table I'm about to pull up is the standard in in the A2 zoning district. So presuming you are developing this number of units, what we were talking about seeking the variance from is this figure right here. So if I'm developing 15 units or if I'm developing 37 units. This is my my baseline number. It's basically an acre in size. What we're not seeking is this multiplier or this additional effect for each unit over 15. So like if I had, if I wanted to develop 17 units. I need 41,000 square feet plus 2,000 for each unit over 16. So in that case, I would need 4,000 additional square feet. I'd need 45,000 to get to it. We're not seeking a change in the additional square footage calculation. We're seeking whether or not this number right here could be, as written, reduced by 25%. Or if if not that, then at least somebody could apply for a variance that say their lot was 39,000 square feet. They could come in and seek a variance on that. And it would go either depending on the degree of the variance, it would either be a staff level decision or a planning commission level decision.
Okay, any comment on that?
That's completely confusing to me.
But it has a significant impact on the developability of certain lots.
Okay, well, if you're talking A2, you know, if you go, if you go up three stories, you're getting, you know, 50% more. Units per footprint.
50% more required parking too, which ends up ground floor space too. And additional open space percentage. So that's why this minimum lot area calculation is tied to those two prevailing standards.
Okay.
I guess I for one wouldn't be opposed to someone applying for variance.
Part of it, but a 25% reduction. Feasible is that?
Well, I think if and it doesn't sound like there's much support and I can read a room, it doesn't sound like there's much support for the parking or maybe for the recreational space. So if you wish to strike through those ideas. Then I think rather than a 25% reduction, what we would come to you is with a new application that just simply seeks, hey. Are we allowed to make a small text amendment that says you can vary this minimum lot standard or minimum lot size, that base number, that that 41,000 number that I just highlighted in that example? It's really then at that point a new application if there's not enough support. For doing the other things, because that 25% standard was tied with the idea of parking lot reduction and recreation space reduction.
Going down.
Yeah. So if you're not going to do that, then the 25% number is void, not as applicable. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other. Commentary?
Mr. Chair, just as a final statement, then I'm gonna just recuse myself. For the three, the three bullets that the.
Yep.
I think you muted. You lost you.
Hang on, we lost you for a second there. Okay, Commissioner Ramoni. Can you start over? It was like as soon as you turned your mic on, we lost you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
One, my apologies, my my microphone was telling me I was off mute, but so very briefly. There were three recommendations from the staff. I personally, and of course, you know, it's up to the to the other commissioner. I find myself in agreement at this point, again, given the fact that we are such a nominal area. On number one and number three, reduce the required base level minimum 25%. I would like to try to simplify. We can go below 41,000, less than an acre, 43560, but 25% I'm fine. And number three. You know, require recreational area. But again, having 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 heard my colleagues, I think we have to try to find somewhat different mechanism. Obviously, I always welcome. A much more straightforward mechanism, but I think that the reduction as suggested, it started to scare me a little bit. So I'm okay with one and three. Maybe some tweaking on number two. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni. Anyone else?
I'll jump in and say. Agree with Mr. Ramoni and one and three are good, but yeah, two obviously needs some work.
And so you're looking at one and three as is.
One and three as is, yes, but does the 25% work if we're only reducing the recreational space? And leaving parking the same? I don't know if 25%, I don't know if the math really works at that point.
Chair?
Yes.
In the interest of time and in the interest of making sure we do the math correctly, staff is requesting with a withdrawal of this application is in its entirety and will present a de novo application. On a similar topic, on this topic, maybe better calibrated, hopefully in time for your July meeting.
All right.
No vote needed because we're withdrawing.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, for the sake of math, as the director suggested, by by reducing by 25%, 75% of 2.33. We're really very, very close to what Commissioner Alex suggested. We are 1.7475, which is very much close to 1.6 that Commissioner Alex suggested, but. I agree with this demands a little more time for the staff to wrap around.
Right, and. You know, it may work, but when you're addressing the parking standard, you need to make sure you have bodyguard walking with you for a while. Okay, and with that, so. The applicant has elected to pull the application for case file 7507, age restricted housing. In its entirety. Well, that will be coming back as a de novo. So that kills that one. Okay. Moving along, staff communications. Do you have any more bad news?
I always have bad news. No, Mr. Chair, I wanted to defer quickly to you on update on the commission committee recruitment and appointments. Any changes for planning commission for next month?
As far as planning commission goes, we had a couple of retreads. That reapplied and thank you all for doing that. And your sentences were extended, I believe, in both cases. And then we have a new alternate coming on. And. And that will be all taking place, I believe, July 1st.
Yeah, so your next meeting, you do have a meeting scheduled for June 23rd, so two Tuesdays from now, but. The new appointments and stuff will not be in effect until July 1.
Okay. Okay, so with that happening, get your campaign signs up, stay out of the right of way, that type of thing. It's important. All right.
Beyond that, just a couple of other quick notes. Staff is going to be interviewing eight very solid candidates to fill Arini's position when she left us. And we don't talk to her or talk about her anymore, do we? I'm sorry, just bitter about that. No, but we have, we had a really good recruitment, 54 total applicants applied, very competitive, and I think we're going to have a good crop of people to choose from. So that's exciting. We welcomed our new, our additional second permit specialist, Keegan, to the city. He has begun work helping Ben and Heather out with our significant volume in. Development applications, so we're happy to have him on board, helping out right away. For those of you who didn't get a chance to go to First Friday this past Friday, it was quite enjoyable. I think those of you who went. Could testify to that. There's still some wrinkles to work out, but the First Friday calendar is just that. It's the first Friday of the month through October, so please. Be sure to check it out at some point this summer. Amber, is there anything else that we should be sharing?
I don't have anything.
The last thing is, this body will be involved to some degree in the upcoming. Transportation Growth Management, the TGM grant that the three cities received for Halsey Street. The cities went through an RFP process with ODOT to select the consultant. We're in negotiations with them right now. On that, and I'm hoping to have more information on that, ideally by July and a calendar for fall into winter next year. With that, that should be important enough for tonight. Thank you all for your efforts tonight.
I just want to say thank you. You have a tremendous workload. You have had, and especially right now. And having turnover in your department and. I think you're managing a lot of balls in the air very well.
Thank you.
And kind of sorry, you know, they, it's a double edged sword. Right now, we're busy, we're adding people, which is a great thing, but it's like. Can't really get caught up. And for that, we all sympathize with you.
Well, this striking this actually is helpful. It's one less thing to do for next.
Well.
For the next week.
Just let us know because we can strike any application. Turn in.
No, no, no.
We really don't have a problem with that. With that, Commissioner Concerns.
Have none.
Okay. Mr. Priggott? No. Mr. Whitman?
All good here.
Commissioner Ramoni?
Happy, thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
I just appreciate people's engagement, hearing their opinions.
And Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, Chris mentioned another meeting on the 23rd is what's that about?
Sure. Sorry.
Planning.
It is a planning commission meeting. Hang on one second. I don't believe we're having a hearing, but we do have some discussion items on the.
Pickup.
Yeah, they will involve actually the Main Streets and Halsey code audit stuff. We have to get get moving on some of that stuff, so. We'll be touching on that.
It'll be.
And then your next hearing will be July 14th. It'll be a type three hearing for variance, if I remember that correctly, Amber, right?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to. Follow up with just a couple of things. One, kudos to you and your staff. You've taken First Friday to a new level. And it was very noticeable our this last week and a great job.
Thank you. That was mostly Marley, who some of you know, previously being involved in planning, that was mostly her and. I'll pass that along.
Think it was nicely done and definitely noticeable. And with that, I don't think I have any.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I will second that one.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor? And just before we go, I just want to thank you all for your discussion tonight and your input. Much appreciated. This is how we have a better city. Thank you for your time and dedication. Have a great evening, you guys.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Thank you.